Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask, well, it appears just in the nick of time, Father John Zeris, the pastor of Saint George Greek Orthodox Church, has entered the chambers. If you would lead us in the invocation, Father, that'd be wonderful. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Blessed is our God always, now and ever, into the ages of ages, amen. Lord Jesus Christ,
celebration. And I believe Wendell Wisenhunt is here, our parks director. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Halloween is a time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghost goblins
we thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you bless our leaders and this community, for you are God and we are people. And we call upon the work of your
and strange and mysterious creatures. Whereas our children's, our city's children celebrate
hands, we call upon your holy name. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional
Place the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
holiday treats. Whereas the annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. It is important to our community that children
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty
be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety
and justice for all.
of the children and protect the rights of homeowners. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Monday, October 31st, as trick-or-treat night in Oklahoma City. And he encourages both children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of the activities to the afternoon and early evening hours. That households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch and exterior lights. The youngsters only call on homes so lighted. And he asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
Absolutely. And we do want this to be a safe event, Wendell. Any advice you want to offer?
Well, I would just ask us as adults and drivers in Oklahoma City to remember it's our responsibility to help the children be safe that evening. We should expect them to be children and expect ourselves to be very careful adults. They're our most precious resource in our community, so let's all take very good care of them. Thank you.
Wendell, thank you. And again, Halloween trick-or-treat will be four weeks from yesterday on October 31st. All right. Wendell, thanks for all you do for us. Our second step of business today is to thank Skip Kelly. Skip, you want to come on down for his six-month period of being the vice mayor for the city of Oklahoma City? There are so many obligations asked of the mayor's office, and we have been indebted for Councilman Kelly for the last six months of stepping in on opportunities where I wasn't able to. And you survived it, my friend?
Well, I did survive it. It was interesting. Last Tuesday was the most interesting.
I know when to be gone.
Yeah. I wish I was where you was at last Tuesday.
Well, I have a token of my appreciation, not only for last Tuesday, but for the past six months for stepping in for the citizens of Oklahoma City.
It's been an honor to serve a mayor on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City and the city council. And in your position, there's been some interesting places I've been and some interesting faces I've met.
Well, that's great. Thank you again. Let's show our appreciation to Councilman Kelly for all he does. And Councilwoman Meg Salyer is now the official vice mayor for the next On item 3B of the council agenda, and Senator Inhofe has asked me to come to Washington to testify on our superior results with the Brownsfield program. So item 3B is to approve the travel expenses for that trip to Washington. How about a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And we're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 27th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 13th.
Move the item?
Second. Motion in a second. Cast your votes on the journal. Passed unanimously. On to item five. This is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's several this morning, starting with the ones that are listed on your agenda. Items 8C, 8E, and 8F are telecommunications towers that have been deferred to various states. And then item 8H was the menu board sign ordinance that was discussed last week. And we're going to strike that, work with the groups, and bring something back at a future time on that issue. And then on page 14, under item 8N1A, 1301 North Council Road, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item B, 3204 South Portland, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F, 3029 Southwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. That's now secured. Item H, 1616 Southeast 51st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has now secured. Item I, 1621 Southeast 51st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has now secured. And then moving to page 18, under claims for denial, item 9A1A, Edgemere Park Preservation Incorporated, we ask that that be deferred for one week, and that would be October 11th of 11.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. We'll recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We begin, I believe, with the presentation on the police headquarters and the court building.
We do. This is an issue, and I think all of council is aware of this, that this was a project that was part of the '07 bond issue. And at that time, there were some, before that, there were some numbers put together on it and a scope established. And we've had some changes that have occurred on that. So this morning, we're going to start out with a presentation by Steve Matthews. We'll start the presentations for ADG to talk about the work that they've done and recommendation on the facilities. And then after that, we're going to follow up with Craig Freeman, who's going to talk about some funding options for us to fill the gap. And with that, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Couch, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, members of the council. Good morning. My name's Steve Matthews, and I'm with Architectural Design Group. With me today is my associate, Scott Dedman. And we're here today to present our findings on the initial study work that we've done on the Oklahoma City Police Department Headquarters and Municipal Courts Complex. I'll be giving you a brief background of the process we've gone through. And then about halfway through the presentation, I'll turn it over to Scott, and he will walk us through the design scenarios that we've been developing this past year. In addition to ADG, our team was comprised of a team of national consultants with expertise in law enforcement, court planning, justice security, and IT and infrastructure, as well as a very talented group of local engineers that supported us in this effort. And now our background. Prior to ADG being hired, a study was done by another firm. Back in 2007, that study determined that really the existing facility, I'm sorry, determined that the existing facility conditions and determined the building areas. Based upon the information contained in that study, a cost estimate was then prepared for the 2007 bond election. And as you know, that did pass. And then in March of 2010, ADG was selected to provide the architectural services for the project. In June of 2010, a little over a year ago, the council met, approved our selection, but also directed us to consider scenarios that included the possibility of new construction, as well as the renovation of the existing facilities. And that's what we're here to present to you today. To begin our work, we reviewed the 2007 study. A group of us toured the facilities, and we did confirm their existing conditions as stated in that previous report. We reviewed the program spaces that have been developed for that. And later on, I'll discuss some changes we made to those program spaces. Over the course of several months, we conducted interviews with the Oklahoma City Police Department and court staff. Based upon the information gathered from these interviews, we developed new, more efficient space programs, we feel, that reflect the needs of the user today and on into the future. Continuing on, we then evaluated the design scenario that was the basis for the March 2010 request for proposals, which we responded to. This called for the renovation of the police department headquarters and municipal courts building and the addition of 30,000 square feet. In looking at this, it was found that there was actually less usable square footage in the existing buildings than was indicated in the 2007 study. And I'll speak to that a little bit more in just a moment. We then went about developing multiple design scenarios, some 20 or 25, as Scott will allude to, including constructing new facilities that met our updated space program requirements. Then in collaboration with the police department, municipal courts, and city staff, a determination was made as to the most feasible and cost-effective scenarios that we should consider, continue to pursue, rather. We then prepared preliminary estimates of those finalists and pursued those a little further. This is just an aerial view of the campus as it exists today, with the police department headquarters and municipal courts at the core of that area. And then this diagram indicates the limits and the extent of the complex as it exists today, bounded there by the red, with the various buildings and parking lots which support the complex. Now, if you'll bear with me, I'd like you to take a tour with me around the existing core buildings, and I will briefly discuss their condition. So this is a little tedious, so please stick with me. The 1965, oh, by the way, the red arrow simply indicates the direction the photograph was taken. The 1965 police headquarters is a concrete structure with masonry walls. It's in fair structural condition, but unfortunately, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are really obsolete. Architecturally, the building has a poorly insulated envelope and is not at all very energy efficient. On around the corner, the northeast corner of the complex, the 1986 Criminal Justice Center addition is built from a steel frame with masonry walls. Actually, it's in very good structural condition. But again, unfortunately, the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems are very inefficient and are not up to the building code. In particular, we learned that the plumbing lines which come and go from the building are in desperate need of repair. Architecturally, the building was built as an infill, and therefore depends upon its neighboring buildings for some of its enclosures. It doesn't have its own facade, if you will, on the south side. Another problem we found with this building, as illustrated in the photograph, is there are a lot of different floor levels. This results in a lot of steps and ramps that make traversing the building really rather difficult. And one more thing I'd like to just point out, over the four stories that are within this building, the courts occupies the basement and first floor, and the police department occupies the second and third floor. Next door to this building, just west, is the 1951 Municipal Courts Building. It's steel-framed with masonry walls. It's in very good structural condition. But again, with a building 60 years old, it's not too surprising to find that the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems are also obsolete, and the building envelope is also poorly insulated. Then finally, the jail and the power plant. The jail is a concrete structure with masonry walls. It's in good structural condition, but on the upper levels, it has very limited floor-to-floor heights. The mechanical, electrical plumbing systems are obsolete, or in some cases, simply nonexistent. Architecturally, it's a very poorly insulated envelope. And on the upper floors, many of the steel-framed windows have missing panes of glass which are desperately in need of replacement. The pigeons seem to like it up there, but it's a pretty rough building on those upper levels. And on the exterior, we found there were lots of areas where the exterior brick mortar had deteriorated and is in need of tuck At the perimeter of the complex, the property management building is currently undergoing a limited interior renovation, including the upgrade of the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems inside. The building exterior is in need of some renovation, including door and window replacement, brick mortar joints needing repair, and some painting. Across Lee is the police department lab building. It's in need of a mechanical system upgrade on the interior, as well as an exterior coating upgrade and some landscaping improvements. As I noted earlier, one of our first tasks was to verify the usable square footage available in the complex. And I don't expect you to read the numbers written on the right, but if you will, the total gross square footage that we found that existed was just over 152,000 gross square feet. And that breakdown illustrated there shows that about 76,000 is in the police department headquarters, about 42,000 in courts, and the 33,180 gross square feet are the unoccupied levels in the jail. And so, as this chart indicates, we found that there was actually less space than we thought, than was thought previously in the 2007 study. If I could direct your attention to the total gross area line, you see that the 2007 study felt like there were 146,000 square feet. However, in our analysis, we found that, starting off, there were 152,000. But once you deducted the unusable space in the jail and the power plant, we found there was really only about 107,000 square feet of existing usable area. And that difference of about 38,000 is rather dramatic. For example, in the case of a renovation scenario, it would require that we add a lot more space than was previously thought. And so, to bring this part of the presentation to a close, this chart simply shows our space program summary. And if I can just walk you through these numbers very briefly. The left-hand column is the 2010 current space occupied, roughly 76,000 by the police department, 42,000 by the courts, totaling just under 120,000 square feet. Our 2011 space program, which we developed, again, with a lot of staff and city input, shows that for new construction, the police department requires about an additional 11,000 square feet for new construction. And courts is needing to grow by about 23,000 square feet, for a total of 152,000 square feet in a new construction scenario, which is a difference of around 33,000 square feet. And then finally, in the right-hand column, were we to renovate the existing buildings, we would require around 97,000 square feet for the police department and 72,000 for the courts, totaling around 170,000 square feet, a growth of just over 50,000 square feet. The fact that the renovation number is slightly higher than the new construction is simply the fact that during our experience working on renovation projects, we find that the inefficiencies in the existing footprints of the buildings dictates that that factor be applied. So. And now with that, I think I'll turn the presentation over to Scott and ask him to present our design scenarios to the group. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Like Steve was saying, we did look at probably 25 different design scenarios as we went through this and evaluated each one of those with the police, courts, and city staff, to really narrow that down to three scenarios that we ended up looking at. To do that evaluation, we really developed some evaluation criteria that we wanted to look at. Number one was the ability to meet the program's functional and spatial requirements. And then to look at the adjacencies of these buildings on the existing site, how they related to the other buildings on the complex. And then we also wanted to look at the possibility for future expansion and how the location of those buildings would relate to that ability. One very important thing was looking at how we could actually minimize the disruption and also any type of employee risk management issues that would take place during that construction. And I wanted to look at the feasibility, especially in the renovation projects, the feasibility of the structural limitations and the existing conditions of those buildings and how that would affect it. And then finally, of course, looking at the project costs. So the first scenario, scenario A, is really a renovation and addition scenario. So we were looking at taking the 1965 building, using it again for police, for the police headquarters, and doing an expansion to that of a three-story addition that was about 44,000 square feet. So that would adequately give us the space that we needed to accommodate the police in a renovation scenario at about 92,000 square feet. And then with courts, we'd be able to take the 1986 addition, which two floors, again, are occupied by police. So we'd be able to give those two floors to courts, develop an addition of about 20,000 square feet that would, again, give us enough space to meet those program needs for courts, which would raise us up to about 72,000 square feet. Now, with each scenario, we develop pros and cons. And really, the pros of this situation would be to create new space for police and courts. It resolves some congestion problems and some security issues that we found in both the police and courts. And it also gives us some very good adjacencies on the site to the related complexes. And also, it does not require any additional land. Now, some of the cons of this were that there was minimal space available for expansion. We pretty much maximized that block of space. Again, the design is going to be somewhat constrained by the existing conditions that we're dealing with in those buildings because of existing column goods and things like that, especially in courts. It became very difficult to use that. It does require the demolition of the jail and also the 1951 Municipal Courts Building. And it does create the possibility of employee risk management issues, especially if we're trying to do a renovation in place. If we're trying to keep the employees in place as we're going through this renovation, it becomes very difficult. And then, of course, a concern about construction disruption in those facilities. The scenario B takes a little different look at it. And that's if we are to build a completely new police headquarters. If we do that, we can build a new police headquarters at about 87,000 square feet. That enables us to build the headquarters and move police directly in, thus eliminating any type of construction disruption or employee risk management issues. Also, as a part of this, we would weather tight the jail, replace the roof, replace the glazing that's missing, and continue to use that for storage as it's being used right now. Also, as a part of this, primarily for aesthetic reasons, we would be doing the exterior renovation of the property management building and also the labs, so that the whole complex ties together aesthetically. And then as a part of courts, we'd be able to use that 1986 building, again, give the upper two floors to courts to relieve some of their space, do the 20,000-square-foot addition onto that, and then that would give them enough space. So we'd have about 87,000 square feet for police, about 72,000 square feet for courts, again, meeting the program requirements. So the primary pros for this, again, it does create new space for police. It eliminates the disruption of the police services in the headquarters building. It reduces the employee risk management issues for the police. The primary cons are that the design, especially of courts, is constrained by the existing building, by that 1986 building, and how we would use that. The construction disruption that would happen in courts if we were to renovate in place while the courts That enables us to build the headquarters and move police directly in, thus eliminating any type of construction disruption or employee risk management issues. Also, as a part of this, we would weather tight the jail, replace the roof, replace the glazing that's missing, and continue to use that for storage as it's being used right now. Also, as a part of this, primarily for aesthetic reasons, we would be doing the exterior renovation of the property management building and also the lab, so that the whole complex ties together aesthetically. And then as a part of courts, we'd be able to use that 1986 building, again, give the upper two floors to courts to relieve some of their space, do the 20,000-square-foot addition onto that, and then that would give them enough space. So we'd have about 87,000 square feet for police, about 72,000 square feet for courts, again, meeting the program requirements. So the primary pros for this, again, it does create new space for police. It eliminates the disruption of the police services in the headquarters building. It reduces the employee risk management issues for the police. The primary cons are that the design, especially of courts, is constrained by the existing building, by that 1986 building, and how we would use that. The construction disruption that would happen in courts if we were to renovate in place while the courts were occupied and trying to maintain operations, and also the possibility of creating some employee risk management issues. The third option we looked at was one where we looked at doing completely new structures for both courts and police. So on the south side, which is a current parking lot, we'd be able to build, again, the new police headquarters at about 87,000 square feet, do the work on the jail building, do the exterior renovation of the lab and property management, and then build the municipal courts building on the site to the north. That's a parking lot that's currently owned by Urban Renewal. Really, the major sort of pros and cons of that scenario, of course, the main thing is, is that it eliminates all disruption for both courts and police, because we're building new buildings and then moving directly into those, so we're not having to work around people. It's the least costly option of all the ones that we've worked at so far, and we'll go into that a little bit more. It reduces the possibility of any kind of employee risk management issues, and really the only cons that we see are the requirement for additional land. So we're taking the existing city-owned parking lot and also the parking lot to the north So there are several cost considerations that we wanted to look at as we were going through this, and one thing we wanted to do was look at what affected the cost from 2007 until 2011. One thing we found, as Steve mentioned before, was that there was a difference of about 38,000 square feet in actual usable space that we found in the building, primarily in the jail space. Renovation and phasing costs were not included in those original budgets. The movement of people when we were trying to keep operations going in those facilities as construction was going on, that was not factored in. The furniture fixtures and equipment costs were not included in 2007.
Can I interrupt for a second? I think the reason that wasn't factored in is because when there's additional space, I think they thought there was enough flex room within the design to do it without moving them out and phasing it. So I think that's why, I mean, you're correct that it was not in there, but I think there was a reason that it wasn't in there, and because with the additional space, we thought there would be enough flex room at that point.
Correct. And of course, over the last five years, there's been escalation costs that's occurred from 2007 to 2012. And one thing we found, too, was that there's been a big increase in, or a significant increase in IT costs to stay up with industry standards in the type of cabling and things that go into the facilities that were not available in 2007, and also bringing things up to an appropriate security standard. Some of the assumptions that we made during the cost estimating was that construction would start mid-2012. The renovation of the existing buildings, of course, would have to be brought up to current codes, so we'd have to bring it up to current life safety codes, current ADA codes, current structural codes. And as Steve mentioned before, we found that the majority of the systems, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing systems, the HVAC were obsolete and in dire need of being replaced. Just as far as a level of quality, if we were to build new, the new building construction would be similar to what we would find in a typical office building. And one thing that we were recommending, too, to keep the initial costs down low and also save on space, is that the OIA energy would be utilized for steam and chilled water as opposed to building freestanding central plants for the buildings. Again, we want to talk a little bit about phasing costs. The things we were looking at were that we were looking at renovation in place, so we leave the folks in place, we try to work around them, move them from one area to another, and construct the renovations. We also looked at an option of temporarily relocating the operations off-site, finding leased space, doing minor tenant finish-out to make those usable, and move everybody offsite so the construction could take place, and then also the option of new construction that you would ask us to look at. What we found was that the cost of phasing, of working around people in that space, there would be as much as $7 million added to the construction cost because of those phasing costs. A lot of that is due just to the number of phases, but also it extends the time of the construction, so it increases the general conditions of the construction. So we felt like that was a big cost that really did not go into building. If we were to take everybody offsite to clear the buildings out so that all the construction, all the renovation could be done at once, there'd be about a $5 million increase or a $5 million cost to do that. That would be lease costs and tenant improvements to move them offsite during construction. Of course, if the new facilities are built, then that eliminates all of the phasing costs because we're able to build new facilities, move people from the existing facilities into the new facilities without missing a step. Soft costs are included in our costs, and this is just the standard city breakdown that they factor in for soft costs, as total of about 25% of the actual project cost. So looking at the three scenarios and the costs, here's what we found in our estimates. Scenario A, again, which was the renovation and addition scenario, that if we were to try to renovate in place, leave the employees in place, we're looking at a cost of about $59 million. If we were able to relocate everybody offsite and do all of the construction at once, that would lower that by about $7 million to $51 million. The big difference there, again, is the length of time that the construction would take. So if we leave everybody in place, the construction time would increase, the cost of general conditions would increase, the phasing costs would increase. So by moving everybody offsite, we could reduce that, again, by about $7 million. So it would be down to about $52 million in that scenario. And Scenario B, where we're building a new police headquarters and doing renovation in the courts in an addition, would be at about $57 million if we're trying to do the renovation in place. And again, if we were to move, we wouldn't have to move police offsite because we'd be able to build their facility and then move directly into it, but we would need to move courts offsite. And if we did that, we'd be able to reduce that somewhat to about $52 million. Now, courts is probably the most difficult one to phase, and it's also probably the most difficult area to relocate offsite, too. So there are definitely some complications in that one as well. So the phasing costs are still fairly high in that scenario. And then Scenario C, where we're building two new facilities. If we were able to come in and build both facilities at the same time with the same general contractor, our estimate is $49 million on that. The one thing that this does is it does offer the opportunity to separate the two projects and be bid as two separate projects. So if we were to do that and bid them separately, maybe even stagger them for a year, it would bring the cost up to about $50,600,000. So we would like to make a recommendation on this, and this is a recommendation from ADG as well as city staff, and that is that we would recommend Scenario C, which, again, is the two new buildings. The reasons for that are, number one, it's the lowest cost of all the options. It's the least disruptive of all the options. We don't have to relocate any operations. We don't have to do any renovation phasing. It reduces all of the risk management issues so that we don't create any problems there. It also offers the best opportunity for future expansion on those sites because there's a little bit of extra land in both locations. It does, it works well in the overall complex, too, so it creates good adjacencies to all of the surrounding facilities, to the lab, to the property management, also to the county jail as well for the courts. It could offer the shortest construction duration of all of these because we don't have to go through all of the phasing, we don't have to find offsite locations, things like that. And again, it offers the possibility of staggering the construction, which gives us some funding flexibility as well. So just briefly, kind of what happens if we do stagger those two projects? What we feel is that probably the general conditions would increase by about $400,000 because of increased contractor, the duplication of general conditions by two contractors. It reduces sort of the purchasing power of a larger project. And also, if we staggered it by a year, the escalation would be somewhere between 5% and 8%, we feel like. But one thing that's a little harder to quantify is if we were to separate those into two smaller packages, one thing it would do would be, probably would increase our bidding pool of general contractors. And so we may get more competition, and therefore, we may see some lower costs by doing that. So there may be something there that helps us in that cost difference.
And if I could add to that just a little bit, if we're talking a $50 million package, you're talking about local contractors. There's just a handful that can bid a project of the $50 million size, to have the capabilities of management, to manage a project of that size, to have the bonding capacity and financial capacity to do a project of that size. If you cut it into, you know, projects that are 25 or less, there are many more contractors. On school projects that are in the, you know, the $10, $15, $20 million, we're seeing seven, eight bidders. You wouldn't see that on a $50 million project. You'd have a smaller number of contractors.
Right. So if we were to separate the two, probably the first phase would be to build the police headquarters, make the jail watertight, do the exterior renovations on the lab and the property management building. Our estimate for that work is about $25,600,000. So that would kind of be Phase 1. The second piece of that would be then to come back, build courts on that north site, and then do the demolition of the main body of the police and courts complex, leaving the jail in place and being able to use that space for secured police parking that they need. Also, we feel like there's a nice opportunity there to develop a landscaped connector between courts and between police and those locations. So for the second half of Scenario C, we'd be looking right at about $25 million. So the complete complex, once everything is completed, our estimate is $50,600,000.
In reference to the jail, what are some of the recommendations as far as the building itself? I heard you say several times as far as, you know, watertight.
Right. We're suggesting that the jail be made watertight. Right now, it's open to the weather. The roof needs some repair. There's windows broken out. There's more pigeons living in it than anything else.
Counselor, if I could add a little bit to that, we're really not addressing the city jail at this point in time. We're putting some money in it to make sure that it's watertight and that it won't deteriorate. And then that's a decision to be made at some time in the future. There are some challenges, as Scott pointed out, or C pointed out, one of you pointed out earlier, that there is, it's structurally sound. There are those that believe it has historical significance. It has some problems because of the size of the floor plates. It's kind of narrow and long, and it also has problems because of the floor-to-ceiling heights, which is very low on it. Right now, it's used for storage, and there are some marshals that office out of that facility, and those are the only functions of the building at that point in time. And so we're kind of saying we're going to maintain, put a little money into it to maintain the building, and then that's an issue that we can have at some future time, is whether we want to save that building, whether we want to renovate it into other uses, or whether we want to maybe tear it down at some point in the future.
It has not been used as a jail in how long?
Since the new jail opened up in '89 or '90. What year did it go? shorter than that, wasn't it? Okay. It's whenever the new county jail opened up.
Well, my concern was is that if, I mean, and I support the projects, and I definitely think that this issue of trying to phase in while you still have employees there, and even though you stated what the cost in reference to that would be in comparison to the other scenarios, I think there's some unforeseen, unforeseen unforeseen for sure, and that is health concerns of issues as it relates to exposure during the construction phase if you still have individuals trying to work around it. And I don't think that's something that's really been factored in because you don't know exactly, but, you know, it could definitely increase a lot of workers' compensation issues, I think. But the other issue I was, the reason why I asked the question is that I would like to understand, I would like to see us, if we're going to do this, then we got this old building, and to build a castle and still have this barn sitting there, it just doesn't, just, to me, it just don't rhyme with the totality of the construction project. You know, and I understand that there's a great deal of interest as it relates to historical preservation of the building, but, you know, I would like to think that we could at least factor in some numbers and architectural design issues to determine what could really be a meaningful purpose and use of the building.
And we can do that. We can come back with you and some costs and some potential uses at a future time.
What we found in regards to the police and the courts, because of the floor-to-floor height, the floor-to-floor height is about 8'8", and the actual concrete beams that come in drop as low as 6'10". So to really be able to create some usable quality office space was very difficult, and also, again, the floor plate's very small on each floor. We just didn't find a usable purpose for that of program spaces that we had for courts. And also, just the fact that separating those uses, or separating any of the uses from the actual court facility or the actual police headquarters facility just did not work well functionally.
I think there have been some arts groups and other folks that have taken a tentative look at it and might have some interest, so there's a possibility that we could, you know, create an adaptive reuse for it, not for city purpose.
Yeah, and we strategically carved this out of the process. This was difficult enough with all the scenarios. We presented three scenarios today. Scott, I don't remember how many scenarios we looked at, 15?
At least 25.
At least 25, okay. Different scenarios over out there. I think I only saw 15, but they had, and so if you put too many factors in it, it's hard to make a clean decision on this, and we tried to separate that so we could be focused on the issues at hand with this issue. But Counselor McCall, you bring up some very good points.
First, I want to compliment ADG on a really good study. It looks like it was very thorough. But it's entitled "An Initial Study Report." Does this mean we're going to get a more report, or is this the report?
That's a great question, Counselor. What we would like to see done today is to get a resolution passed adopting Resolution C, if that's our recommendation, if Council agrees with that, and go forward with that. That way, ADG can begin to do the preliminary design on the building and get them going in that direction. We are presenting to you, Craig's going to come up in a minute, and present to you some financial options to fill the gap, the funding gap on this. And we've got five solutions, and we're trying to say that there is a solution out there. We're not asking for a decision on that today. We're saying, let's go ahead and get going on that preliminary design to get there because that's a critical path, and we'll come back in the next month or two and make a decision as to how we're going to fill that funding gap.
This is an observation, it's not meant to be critical, but I've worked in old buildings before, and some of this renovation needs to be an ongoing process. As systems decay or become obsolete, we need to look at replacing those systems at that time rather than waiting until the building's about to fall down and, I mean, have to rescue. And I just think it's an important aspect of how we manage our facilities once we get it in place.
Is there asbestos in the existing buildings?
In the older buildings, yes, there is some asbestos.
So would that have to be abated, or you'd have to?
To reuse those buildings?
Well, for demolition, we'll have to bait it, too. Either way, whether you, you know, whether you, but either way, there's going to have to be some asbestos abatement.
But those costs have been factored?
Yes.
Okay. So land requirements, the new OCBD headquarters, that goes on land that the city owns?
City owns, urban renewal owns.
Okay. And city owns that, and then urban renewal owns where the municipal courts?
That's correct.
So there's no land acquisition cost?
Outside of the city family.
Just to revisit the 2007 study, can you explain to me how, that study's done in 2007 to help us with an estimate for the 2007 bond? How is it off in terms of usable space by 25%?
Well, as we did the analysis, there was statements in there that there were 146,000 square feet of usable space. And I think as the budgets were put together for the bond issue, it was felt that a total of about 176,000 square feet would be adequate to meet the needs of both police and courts. Therefore, using a total of, or an addition of about 30,000 square feet to create that 176,000 square feet. What we found, I think, what we found was that the jail had been factored into that 146,000 square feet of usable space. But really, to do an addition, the jail needed to be demolished to create that space for that 30,000 square foot addition. There was no other space on the site to do that.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, just one question, Kirk, after. Counsel, you need comments. How much space is in this Plan C for expansion?
For expansion? Let me back up just for a second. And again, this would have to be refined a little bit, but what we're seeing right here, between the property management building and the new police headquarters, we do have some space for expansion. Of course, these are just conceptual footprints, and so those can change.
But my question deals less with additional building as in the proposed structure that you have under Plan C, Scenario C. Is there additional space in the police headquarters building for minor expansion, additional personnel?
Yes, I'm sorry. As we develop the programs, we were looking at a program window of from about 2015 to 2030. And so there is additional space for growth. We're not just building it to handle the capacity of today. Right, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that well.
Any other comments on Scenario C, or have a preference for one of the other scenarios, Larry?
I have a question as far as process, Jim. Will Craig talk about the difference in what was budgeted in the 2007 bond program versus today? And will that be the time to address any legal questions that I might have between what was on the ballot and what we're talking about doing now?
Would it be best to hold until Craig's? Not necessarily. I think we can talk about that at any time. It's not Scott's issue, but that's a very germane issue. And we've worked very hard with, this has been a huge team effort, along with ADG. We've had the police department involved, there are senior management, the courts administration's been involved, public works has been involved on this, finances have been involved on that. To your question, the municipal council's office has been very much involved, and our outside bond council is involved. And I think we have the people in this room that can probably answer almost any question regarding that. So if you want to bring it up now, that would be fine.
Well, I'd just like to know how it fits together, because in the 2007 bond issue, we asked the voters for a finite amount of money, did we not?
Yes.
And it seemed like it was in the 30, 31, 32 million dollar range?
It was 35.
35. And now we're talking about, and I'm in favor of Option C, so this is not, we're talking about an Option C which is going to be roughly $50 million.
Correct.
And so whatever funding alternative that Craig proposes, how do we, is there any legal ramifications of that difference?
You can supplement your geo-bond funds with other sources of funds, and Craig is going to present a funding gap scenario to you that would utilize court fees, and that those fees then could be used to pay back any type of loan revenue bonds or an internal loan of money. And that could then be used for any courts-related use to fund that.
But we've been very careful on the onset to make sure that whatever we do is in strict compliance with what the voters voted on and in compliance with the bond vote of 2007. That's a great question, and very much in our thoughts as we develop these scenarios.
Since you brought it up, doing Scenario C would be, could be done under the language that was put in the bond issue? Yes. You're actually, if you look at how the complex is defined, and this was actually the existing complex in 2007, it's in ADG's study, and I don't have the page number right now, but the page where the, and it's actually attached to the resolution that I did, where it shows what the complex consists of that's defined. So that is your entire complex. Then you have a central area where you have basically four main buildings, which are municipal courts, the police headquarters, the jail building, and also the police parking structure. And you're keeping one of those four buildings by keeping the jail. So you're, we believe, we've had numerous meetings with geo-bond council on this, and our opinion is that you're in line with the language.
I just know that there's, in my previous life, there was times that came up that we couldn't do what we wanted to do on fire station projects because of the wording and the bond proposals. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to get up to the 11th hour and somebody come up and says, oh, you can't do that.
No, we've already explored that extensively, and this language speaks of the complex, the police municipal courts complex, which is a broader area.
So extensively, is that why this wasn't on a couple of weeks ago?
Anybody prefer another scenario besides C, or want to have a discussion about one of the other scenarios? Okay, so it sounds like we're getting a consensus that C is where we like to go, though we haven't heard how we're going to pay for it yet.
Right. So at this point, if we would like, if Craig could come up and go over some of the funding scenarios.
So the issue, as you look at this from a funding perspective, regardless of the alternative that you choose, and with the direction of Option C, that's what we have looked at the funding gap on, but every one of the alternatives would require additional funding. So the fact that we're looking at additional funding isn't based on which alternative you're choosing, because actually the other alternatives are even slightly more expensive. So we looked at Option C here, and you can see the bond funds, we have $36.7 million. That's a little bit more that was in the listed project because the police department had some unlisted funds that they've incorporated with this to try to help cover that gap. And we'd have to come back and declare an unlisted project, but that's funding that's available there. We have some CIP funds that are available, but we've transferred from court fees from the past year to help with either some significant maintenance that needs to be done in the court facility because there's a lot of needs that are there already, or for helping to cover the funding for the project. Police sales tax fund, there's some funding set aside there to help cover it. So we end up in the end with $50.6 million of the estimated cost, $38.6 million with a funding gap of about $12 million that has to be covered. And so what we want to do is look at some options that we've pulled together. When you look at this on the options, and we'll look at each one of these individually, the first three options rely upon the MAPS-III use tax fund. The MAPS-III use tax fund, as you all know, is a temporary source of revenue, but it is fully at the council's discretion as to how those funds are used. So the council determines the purpose for how those funds are used. In the past, since the original MAPS projects, these temporary use tax funds have been used for capital projects, and they've gone from continuing to support the MAPS projects, doing capital repairs, capital maintenance and replacement on the original MAPS projects, to using it, starting with the MAPS for kids, for police and fire fleet replacement. Our plan has been that the MAPS-III use tax will be used for police and fire fleet replacement. And our projection right now is that if we didn't use these funds for any other purpose, that as we finish using the MAPS for kids funds for public safety fleet replacement and move into the MAPS-III tax, it would take us to about 2019, a couple of years past the end of the MAPS-III use tax, the time after it expires. So we're going to look at these scenarios. The first three look at MAPS-III use tax. Then we have an option with issuing revenue bonds, and using that, we would do that through the public property authority, through one of our trusts. And then the final option is if we want to include in the next geo-bond authorization, and we'll talk about the alternatives and some of the implications of the various alternatives. The first one we wanted to look at was just using MAPS-III use tax as a direct cash payment. So it would take funds out of the potential use for the public safety fleet replacement, so it would take about one year off of the public safety fleet replacement program. Right now, that program, over a 10-year period, averages about $12 million. Some years it's a little more, some years it's less, and then it continues to grow through the life of the program. But it'd take about a year off of that program. It wouldn't require any kind of repayment. The council could determine that this is how they want to use these funds, and we could move ahead with this, covering that gap. The second option would be to use MAPS-III use tax and do an internal transfer from the MAPS-III use tax with the plan to repay that or reimburse the MAPS-III use tax fund from court fees. So we could transfer the court fees annually. Right now, we have about $600,000 a year that can go towards improvements in the facility or towards covering the gap and replacing the facility. And so that could be done over about a 21-year period right now. As we've looked at it, we just use, generally when we do these internal transfers with repayments, we will repay that with interest, and we'll usually use the, as a basis, the treasury bond. It would be about the same period of time, because that's typically what we're invested in. And so that way, the fund, you know, if the intent is to reimburse that fund, that fund wouldn't lose any ground in what it would have had otherwise. So that would take about 21 years to do that. A third option we wanted to look at was if we'd use the MAPS-III use tax as an internal transfer that was repaid, that we would repay it with court fees. There are some court fees, the municipal court and legal has looked at, that there's some traffic fees right now, traffic fines right now for speeding 1 to 10 is actually a lower court fee than all other traffic violations. And if that was normalized to balance those together, it would generate about another $500,000 a year in revenue. And so, and I've got another slide on that that we can look at. But if we did increase the court fees, increase the amount that we could pay from court fees to reimburse that, it would be a shorter repayment time as an alternative, reduce the amount of interest that was repaid. And so that's just another option that we wanted to put out there to look at. This slide looks at, a little bit at the speeding 1 to 10. Basically, we have significant needs, as Steve and Scott have pointed out, in the courts facility as it stands right now. If we were to do nothing with the facility or have to postpone this or delay the project, there's a lot of money that needs to be invested in that. Obviously, you wouldn't want to go in and do a full renovation if the plan is in the future that we're going to come back in the next few years and tear it down. But you would have to do enough to at least help avoid any potential for catastrophic failures within those systems of the heating and the air, the electrical and the plumbing. And so there would have to be an investment. So there's a need that's there already right now. The court fees for speeding 1 to 10 have not changed since 2003. And at the time they were established, that speeding 1 to 10 had a different requirement, reporting requirement than what the other traffic violations had. Now that's changed where basically it requires the exact amount of administrative effort as the other traffic violations do. And so there's justification there, both from the need that's there with the facility as well as from the effort that's required administratively in processing those. A fourth option that we looked at, so that third option would be the same as Option Two, it would just allow a quicker payback to the MAPS-III use tax. And one of the things I forgot to point out was that on Option Two, basically, the, I'll go back to that one real quickly, but on Option Two, the payback period is so long that basically it has the same effect on the police and fire fleet replacement program as the cash payment would, because it takes such a long period to get that repaid, that it would take about a year off the replacement program. Later on, we would have that funding repaid, that we could come back and do another capital project, or several years down the road, do fleet replacement again. But there would be a large gap there that we're going to have to come up with another funding source. And so that was one of the drawbacks with this one, is it's still taking a year off of that fleet replacement program, but it does all eventually get repaid. On this option, if we do the, on Option Three, if we do the increased fees, we at least have the opportunity to get that paid back quickly enough that we still, we don't lose ground on the fleet replacement program. Sufficient funding would be there to cover that year through 2019. Again, if we go with the cash or Option, or the Option One or Option Two, it would take us through 2018 on the fleet replacement program. The fourth option looks at revenue bonds, and that would be going outside to investors to sell bonds. It would be a higher interest cost. We just looked at 15 years as an alternative, but even when we went out to 20 or 25 years, we would still have to have an increase in the court fees for court fees to be able to be the revenue source that covers this. So regardless of the length of time, you could get by with a little bit less of an increase in the court fees if you went with a longer term, but you would pay a lot more interest over the life of that. And so it's an alternative that we have. One of the real disadvantages really in this option is that, as opposed to using the MAPS-III use tax or doing an internal transfer that's repaid, we're working with ourselves. The city council's fully in control with what decisions are made or changing the terms. If something were to happen where the court fees fell off, if citations were reduced, if there's a legislative change that impacted it, that the council would still have the alternative to make changes in those terms of that repayment, or even decide not to repay it if that was a course you wanted to take. Once we go outside for a loan and we're actually selling bonds to the investors, we're strapped into, we're locked into having to pay that, and the likelihood is we would have to have a guarantee from another source, like have a set aside from a general fund or other source, or we set aside a reserve to ensure that if the court fees weren't sufficient to cover the debt service, that we would have another source that could help pay that or cover that cost. And so that's one of the risks that we have with this option. The fifth, yes, sir?
For the people watching out there that get as confused as I do sometimes, to do the bond scenario, you're paying the bondholders that interest money, the $3.2 million.
That's correct.
Under the other scenario, we'd be paying an internal fund, our own fund, that interest money. Is that not correct?
Right. We would make that fund whole, and it would go back to, it would stay within the city. That's exactly right. That's a good point. On the fifth option, and really, one of the advantages of Number Four and Number Five is that it doesn't require any funding from other capital funds of the city or other operating funds. Option Four has the potential, we may have to use some operating funds. If you go to Option Five, the project was a general obligation project to begin with, and so it would keep it within the general obligation program. This would require to take it back to the voters in the next authorization so that the voters approve this additional funding for the project. The next authorization right now is estimated for 2019. So the assumptions that we've looked at is that if we went to 2019 on that next authorization, we're probably looking at eight to 10 years before we get the funding to be able to do this. We could move ahead with half of the project, with a portion of the project, for instance, with the police headquarters, and then delay the court facility until that time period. But as ADG has pointed out, we would have the escalation in cost for construction during that time period as well. So it's good that it doesn't require anything from other city funds or capital funds, but it does require that we would delay the project, or at least a portion of it. The cost of the project would increase. And we still have the issue with the court facility, if we leave that one to be delayed, that we have significant investment we're going to have to make using some of the court fees to help get that facility to work and continue on for the next eight to 10 years while we're waiting for the time that we can come back and include that as a part of general obligation bond program.
Could we do a single-purpose geo-bond election?
And just take it to the voters at this point in time? Yes, we could.
Thank you.
How was the determination made that we could generate $500,000 from increased court fees? Was that based on the same level of traffic tickets being?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
One of my concerns would be that because our police officers are human, that if we increase that fee for the 1 to 10 mile per hour of the speed limit, they might give fewer tickets.
That is a possibility. We used, we tried, we were conservative in the way we estimated how much that would generate, so that there could be some fluctuation there. But you're exactly right, that is a possibility.
And as I recall, when we raised the court fees last time, it's, state law infers, it doesn't spell out, that we should be working our court costs for the operations of the court system. Isn't that generally what the expectation is?
That's correct.
And so here, it seems like we're taking it, instead of operations, we're using it for capital.
Or we're using it for the operations of the court system. Still is. It's paying for the court building.
Right.
Which can include the capital and the facility, maintenance of the facility. It's a part of the cost of operating the court.
What would the, I guess I'd like to hear from someone, maybe the police chief's a person. What was, what is the impact from delaying the capital expense on our fleet one year? How many miles do these cars have on there currently in our fleet replacement system? And what are we talking about?
Well, if we had to order fewer cars, what it would amount to is increasing the amount of miles that are put on the car. We typically put about 100,000 miles on a vehicle.
And this would extend it to?
We're really not addressing that. What we're doing is taking a year off of that program, and so we will run out of money in 18 instead of 19, or 19 instead of 20, in 2020, at that point in time. So we're not really asking that the police or fire modify our current replacement program. It's just that the funding available to fund that will end a year, a year soon. It's just that the funding available to fund that will end a year sooner.
Okay. But if we used MAPS-3 use tax money and did not pay it back, how would that impact the fleet replacement?
The money, again, would run out in...
2018.
2018 instead of 2019.
That's what I heard. In 2019, we'll have to make a decision how to fund public safety fleet replacement. As it stands right now, that would move up to 2018 if you don't pay the MAPS-3 tax.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly right.
And had the MAPS-3 not passed, we'd be having that discussion this year.
Right.
So would you... In 2018, you would just then have to decide, how do you fund fleet replacement for how many more years?
We're going to have to do that at some point in the future anyway. That discussion is going to be...
We're going to do it anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, Larry?
Two questions, Craig. First question, we have taken some federal monies for police for the next three or four years, as I recall, to maintain the level of police that we have right now?
There is some limited... It's called COPS funds.
COPS funds.
And that's a two-year program?
Right.
Okay. And so at the end of two years, we'll be looking at a challenge if we want to maintain those positions of finding the funds for that. One of the possible sources would be the use tax money. That would be an option. If we use the use tax money for what we're talking about here, then we've taken that option off the table.
You know, it would be an option, because it is at the council's discretion. The fact that it's a temporary source...
I understand.
You know, we did do that temporarily last year and then repaid that. We wouldn't recommend that as a fallback if we had no other alternative. It's something we could do, but it'd be a very temporary time. We've got fire positions that are the same way. We've got even more fire positions actually that don't own a grant than police. And so that's an issue either way, but that could be a very temporary answer to that.
Agreed. Now, here's my next question. Where do we stand on selling the bonds for this project right now? And when is... If we go ahead with option... With alternative C, with some funding option, what is the implication on the use of the bond money next year to move this thing forward?
I think we're actually looking at... We would phase the payment... The sale of those bonds over the next three years, so that we don't negatively impact or too strongly impact the other infrastructure projects. So it's looking at over about a three-year period. And depending what was decided, you know, we wouldn't have to sell the full amount if we delayed the project. You know, delayed the project to fin it, to do GEO bonds, to fund the remainder of the project, we would sell enough to finish the project. Right now, if we go with option C and use one of the other alternatives, you know, options one through four, then we would go ahead... We would move ahead with that over the next three years of selling those bonds.
Yeah.
So to go... To put it in a different perspective, there still will be monies available over the next two to three to four years for other infrastructure, like road improvements, bridge improvements, drainage, et cetera.
Absolutely. We're going to schedule that so that it doesn't negatively impact that.
Thank you.
I heard somebody's light go on.
Yes.
David?
Your Honor, thank you. Craig, from one account to another, it seems like option three provides us with the overall lowest cost and has the least impact on fleet replacement. And certainly, the last two options, four and five, brings in interest cost of over $3 million. So... And I think it also gives us the greatest flexibility. Should these fees not come in like we anticipate at this time, we would still have other options to deal with funding for this. So to me, option three seems like the best. I didn't know if you were going to make a recommendation or not, or just let us...
We are not. We're not looking for decision on that today. I thank you for your comments on that. But we are... What we're trying to do is let you know, we've got at least five viable options out there for this solution. And so we're asking to go ahead with preliminary design, and then we'll bring back these options again and have the same discussion when we've got a little bit more time in the next month or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary?
Just quick, and I'll ask Jim, and he may defer it to Stacy, I don't know. The concept of increasing the fees on the 1 to 10, not having been changed since '09, I believe.
'03, 2003.
Would that be something we should be looking at anyway? I mean, you're talking... We've got this concept of trying to keep our fees moving ahead in the world, so to speak, and with the increased requirements that have come up. Would that be something that's not out of the question to look at increasing anyway?
It is a change that has occurred in the way we do business that every operation should look at. We used to not report speeding 1 to 10 violations, convictions, to the Department of Public Safety. And now we report those along with all other moving violations. It's just a matter of what the Department of Public Safety does with those convictions that matters to drivers. But we have to go through the same process to report those, and that is the difference in the fee that we collect. There's an $11 difference in a speeding 1 to 10 court cost than the other moving violation.
Stacy, what is a 1 to 10? What are we talking about?
About $167 total.
Yeah. I just think that's enough for one mile over the speed limit. I just don't like the idea of raising it for capital. If we had to raise it for operations, well, then I guess we need to raise it for operations. We have to run the court system. But if we have other options, I just don't see raisement above $167. That's a lot of money. And I really think it'll impact our officers' willingness to give those tickets. And we need those tickets given, and there are certain instances in neighborhoods where we want people to slow down. And that's one of the best ways to get people to slow down. We don't want to break somebody.
$167 to $178, is that what you're saying? $11 increase?
Well, how is that going to raise $500,000?
It's because of the number of citations that are written.
Well, $11 a time is going to add up to a half a million dollars over what period of time?
A year.
A year?
About $44,000 in a year's period.
Good grief. That's a lot of tickets.
So you're basing this on the fact that you already have numbers from how many years to give you an average number of speeding citations that the officers write?
You know, that was a relatively low year that we looked at.
What year was that?
That number's actually been higher in the past.
Yeah, I see it's two years ago.
Yeah, it's two years ago, and that was a fairly low year that we looked at.
So you're saying 2009?
Yes.
Was the number...
2009, 2010.
Was 44,000?
44,000.
Speeding tickets?
Yes. And if I take that times the $11, then that's how you get to the half a million.
But is that 1 to 10?
44,000, 1 to 10s? Yes.
1 to 10?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it seems pertinent to see our fines based with other municipalities.
We'd be happy to do that.
We probably should look at that, which we've done in the past, I know, to see where we are in relationship with it. But I guess based on what I've heard, and although it's been slightly muffled here in the last few minutes about the number of tickets we gave, because it's more than I would have expected, but I still like the idea of using the MAPS-3 use tax without trying to pay it back with additional court fees. But if it's just $11, I'll admit, that doesn't seem like a huge difference in the officer's willingness to give the tickets or our consumer's ability to pay. Anybody else want to have a comment? We're not asking for any decisions today, although I think we have selected sort of scenario three as our construction preference. How we pay for it is still on the table.
Well, my question... I have another question in reference to that. What are the number of tickets that's over 1 to 10? Why not raise the fee for those individuals who are driving in excess of 1 to 10?
Well, I think we raised them not that long ago. These haven't been raised since '03, and those were raised five years ago, probably or so.
These are the citations that we had a difference in the structure of the amount that we bring in, and that's where the change has been. The other speeding violations, the 11 to 15, 15 to 20, 20 to 25 are a greatly smaller number. There are far more speeding 1 to 10s issued than others.
Councilman Kelly, part of the answer to that also is that by statute, municipalities collect the cost of prosecution from convicted defendants. It's a mandatory requirement. It's a shell. So every time we have looked at our court cost structure or any fees, we have to look at the actual cost that it takes to do that. And that's what we can assess to convicted defendants. So when you're talking about kind of a punitive effect, you know, against speeders who speed higher at a faster rate, that has to come from the fine portion and not from the cost portion.
If I could tag team on that just for a second. Well, I think what you'll find is that most of those $44,000, the reality of it is, is most of them are probably over 10 miles per hour. Officers would normally give somebody a break in many cases, because anything over 10 miles per hour was... Would go on their insurance. Anything under 10 would not. So in most cases, a big majority of those $44,000 were actually going to be over 10 miles per hour anyway. They'd just cut them a break unless it is 1 to 10, and so it wouldn't go on their insurance. That's the reality of the officers out working in the field.
So the reality is, they're not one mile over the speed limit? They're...
That doesn't happen, I wouldn't think, very often.
They might be in excess of 10, but they're cut a break at the time.
Yeah.
Mayor, from the prosecution perspective, I will absolutely confirm that. What we see over and over on those speeding 1 to 10 citations is that the officer will write the actual speed and put a little circle around it, so we as prosecutors know how fast they were actually traveling, but they exercise their discretion in the field and give them that lesser offense.
And then the DMV is or is not turning this over to insurance companies?
To the best of my understanding, this started out with a federal mandate having to do with commercial driver's licenses. And they withhold highway funding, state highway funding, if the states, by their legislatures, don't require the reporting on the speeding 1 to 10 now. So we have to report for everything, and then DPS is supposed to cull out those commercial driver's licenses offenses, and only those go on the driving record. That's my understanding.
Okay. So with this... If this was to pass, then you would talk... You're talking about $178 for a citation 1 to 10, and that's not including the administrative court costs, is that correct?
That includes the court costs.
That includes the court costs?
Yes.
All right. Are we done discussing it for now? Staff feel like they have direction?
We do. It would be appropriate. Can you...
Yes. The second companion item with the initial study is a resolution where you would specify just which of the design scenarios that you choose, whether it's A, B, or C.
Okay. And I think we had a consensus on C. How about a motion on C in a second? Comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And so we'll do the preliminary design on that, and in the next month or two, we will bring back and for further discussion, the funding option with the additional information asked for today.
Okay. Probably need a motion now on the rest of the MFA. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC MFA convenes Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Okay? Comments or questions on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA convenes Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. One item? Comments or questions on the EAT? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC EAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Is there any individual consideration? All right. Anybody else? All right. While they're continuing to look, Ed, you want to jump in on 6T and U?
Well, I just, again, I want to revisit some of the same questions. How do we determine... Now, just ask the members of the Economic Development Trust, I guess, but how do we determine the allocation based on the number of jobs? Is there a formula? Or it's... Because there is... This is basically a third per job of what we talked about with Continental Resources. So can you help me understand how that... What's the formula?
Brad, can you help us out?
Yes, sir. Councilman, we received an inquiry to a company that's wanting to relocate to Oklahoma City or expand in Oklahoma City. They submit various sets of information to us. The one is the number of jobs and the average salaries and their capital investment. We take those variables and input those into a regional economic analysis model. And from there, it will tell us how much of additional taxes that those jobs will generate in our economy. And then what we do from there is we will assess... Our program is structured where we look for a five to seven-year return on our investment. And then we will, depending on the... If the job is a headquarters or whether it's just the overall... It is a little subjective, depending on whether it's a headquarters or it's a back-of-office type of situation. But at the end of the day, we look at the indirect taxes that are generated, or the direct taxes that are generated, and then we inform them through the chamber of how much we will offer them. And in this case, it averages it out to a particular amount for that.
Let's add one important point, and that is, all these payments are retroactive. They're paid on performance. There's no money advanced to these companies. The payment is after the job has been in place for one year, and the salary is what they estimate it to be, and then the payment is paid. But it's not like some of these tax credit programs that the state has where the money's upfront. This is after the fact payment.
I mean, there is a state program, there's a Quality Jobs Act. I mean, do you consider, is that a factor, how much money is coming from the state? I mean, I assume Boeing... Did Boeing get money from the Quality Jobs Act?
It's my understanding that they did qualify for it, and they made application to the state for that.
So they're getting paid by both the state and the city?
Yes.
And is that a factor in how much the city gives?
Well, it's a consideration. We review it, because if they don't qualify for the state quality jobs program, they probably won't qualify for ours. But beyond that, the Oklahoma City fund was meant to be a closing fund. The last effort we would make to entice a company to either enlarge their workforce here or to bring a new workforce in. And so it was meant to be used in conjunction with other plans.
Do you know how much the state is going to give with the quality jobs? I mean, do you know what they're... Because you're making your offer ahead of time, you said. You tell the chamber ahead of time how much we're willing to give.
At the point at the time we make the offer to the prospective employer, that's when the number becomes public.
Okay. But when you make that offer, you don't know how much the state is going to match?
No. No.
Well, not exactly, but we can certainly, we know what the state program is and we could plug in those numbers and come up with a general scenario because the state program is, like our program, is a very finite based upon numbers that drive it. So we don't, we don't calculate that, but we could estimate that pretty close.
Well, let's just take this, I mean, you have Boeing that we're going to pay roughly $5,000 a job and Continental Resources is $15,000 a job. So help me understand the, why you'd pay one three times?
Well, in that situation, Continental is going to invest $23, $24 million in capital, buying a building, buying a hangar, doing things. Then they're going to create 460 jobs at $130,000 on an average salary over, that's kind of their average when you roll up all those salaries. When you put that in the model, that generates a significant amount more than 232 jobs at $90,000 a year. And then, and these are negotiated with the companies, too. If they, for some reason, they just, their numbers come down, we lower that amount during negotiations with them. So, but at the end of the day, when you, when you add a significant amount of payroll like Continental is, plus it's a headquarters, that has significant impact versus a Boeing, which is $90,000, we would, if you recall, our policy says that the average salary is around $38,000, $37,000. So it's significantly over our policy.
How about Chesapeake, for example? Because you're going to pay about two-thirds for the Chesapeake jobs as the Continental Resources jobs. Chesapeake's going to make a sizable investment in their headquarters campus.
Chesapeake has to invest a minimum of $50 million in theirs and in addition to paying, I think the average salaries that we negotiated were around $87,000. So, and that's at 350 jobs, so.
So Chesapeake's making twice the capital investment that Continental Resources is, but is only being paid two-thirds per job?
They're creating less salaried jobs. They're creating, Chesapeake was 350 jobs, Continental was 460. Average salaries are at 80 versus 130,000. When you put that into the model, you get a significant amount more economic impact to your city. And I'd be happy to sit down with you and go through all those with you.
This regional economic analysis model? I mean, is that a software program? Is that a formula that you can enter numbers into and get something back?
Yes.
Okay. And again, you've always used the average, not a median or...
No, sir. We, we always take exactly what, you know, they provide us a list of the jobs they're going to create and how many of those jobs they're going to create and what the average salaries are. We take, roll up all of those numbers and put them in the model. So even if you use median or mean or the average, it really doesn't impact it as much. When the council approved the policy originally, we structured it where, originally it was based on two factors. One was average wages. And in most cases on all of our projects, we've always provided less on an average wage than what our policy actually says. And number two, there was, the average wage and there was a return on investment. And we look for a five to seven-year return on our investment where we look at the additional taxes that are brought into the city as a result of these new jobs.
Yes, Dave.
Brad, may I ask you, you know, in the model, you said it, you look at the increase in tax revenue. Is that solely sales tax revenue that you're projecting?
It's sales tax and property tax revenues.
I see, okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket? We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrents docket. Thirteen items. Any individual considerations? All right, sounds like we're ready to go. Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. We're on to items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. First was in Ward Seven. It's an ABC Two issue. Is anyone here wishing to speak on this item today? All right, how about a motion then on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, if I could reflect it, move the emergency on this, please.
All right, how about a second on the emergency? Cast your votes on the emergency on item 8A1. It passed unanimously. On item 8A2, this is a zoning issue in Ward Seven. The address is 10015 North Lindsey. It's currently R1, single-family residential and it will become a planned unit development district. Okay, is there people here to speak on this issue today? All right, one person has signed up to speak. You want to come forward, sir? Good morning. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Dr. Mike Johnston, 10101 North Lindsey. The north end with the R1 up there. I'm the house and warrants that are up there. Been a resident there for 26 years. Mr. Penetta, the second house owner on Lindsey, is here also. And we're, want to be in opposition of this particular presentation. And our primary concern at this point because the planning commission has gotten all warm and fuzzy because they presented it as a community garden. However, if you look at the words that they have presented, this is a commercial entity that is going to be owned by a 501(c). It's our understanding. I don't know all the legal hubbub about it, but this is what we see. And the presenter says, well, there'll be just a caretaker there. Well, what they've done, they've gone from R1 to agriculture zoning, BUD, and reduced the restrictions to where they could put a commercial, excuse me, a retail outlet there. And he says, well, there'll just be the caretaker there. Well, there's five greenhouses, which happen to be 150 feet from my front door as the plot plan is there. And, okay, right here are these five hothouses, plastic framed houses, are 150 feet from my front door. They are going to put a site-through fence there, which probably is not going to be a total. I used to have a nice view of downtown Oklahoma City skyline, but that's a personal issue. Also, the entrances and exits, the entrance is right in front of Mr. Penetta's house and the exit is, will shine their lights right into the bedroom of Mr. Passa. Our houses are all brick and mortar and by lowering the zoning, they can have mobile homes there for the caretaker. They say, well, they'll just be a caretaker. Well, they've got a retail outlet. Somebody's supposed to be coming there to buy and use that facility. Five hothouses. One guy's not going to be able to do that. They've got a pavilion put on demonstration. Somebody's got to come for the demonstrations. And they have an amphitheater. Well, you've got to have somebody setting in those. Lindsey Street from Hester on North is a dirt road with gravel.
Well, it's currently R1, single-family. You would prefer homes be built there than this?
No, I mean, that's unrealistic. Where the practice facility is almost due west on Oklahoma. The corrections department's on the east on Kelly. I don't know what would be there. I don't know what Arcadia Farms or Chesapeake or Aubrey's going to have plans for the 150 acres to the north of us. But we want whatever comes in here to be a viable entity that would be successful. We don't have warm and fuzzy feelings for the present owner of the land because he is a landscaper who has a landscaping business, that is dumped there and we've had to have the city out there more than twice to have him clean it up. And still some dumping.
Skip, what's your preference here?
Well, you stated that you didn't have any problems with it being a viable business if...
I'm sorry?
I mean, what is your objections to the project as it is in reference to all of the concessions that they have made?
What concession?
Well, there was going to be an amphitheater and they agreed not to have any type of programs after 9:00 a.m.
Correct, so we're not going to have a rock concert out there. That was agreed. They agreed to have only 30 chickens instead of unlimited chickens. And they said maybe that they wouldn't have sheep there. But the consensus or what our concern is, is the road. I mean, this is a commercial entity. Usually you have commercial entities that at least upgrade the road. The city is going to have to address that. There's a low water crossing there that we have to put in gravel and dirt ourselves to keep it maintained well enough for us to, for just the residents to go up and down that road. And you're going to put all this traffic on Lindsey. And at the end, right at present, there is a loop or a cul-de-sac. Part of it's on my property, part of it's on this property. Greenhouse number one will be on that cul-de-sac. And so there will be a dead end into my property for city traffic or mailmen or whatever coming down. It'll be a blind cul-de-sac. I mean, it'll just end there. So there has not been any address to the concern that we have with the traffic. And that's our main concern. They've addressed the water that isn't going to go deeper and all these kinds of things. The other thing is, look where they put all the structures. The three houses are there and that's where they put them, right in our face. They got the whole rest of the property there to, granted, it's, the topography is such that that's a high-level spot. They have at least a bit of dirt to move and all that. They've kind of spucked it in our face.
Sorry about that. I was just curious with regard to the ingress and egress issue and the, potentially the lights interfering with the residences. Have you looked at that in the evening and addressed that?
Well, one of the things, this is, there's not going to be nighttime activities. Again, we set the nine o'clock just for summer hours. Wintertime, no one's going to be out there probably after 5:00 to 5:30. We have 10 parking spaces. We don't expect a lot of traffic. You know, the greenhouses, I mean, if you want me to address the rest, I guess I better...
Why don't you go back there?
I'm Brian Kins, Kinn Engineering, representing applicant just so I can introduce myself for the record. But the greenhouses, you know, the greenhouses could be there now. If someone had, if it was just AA, there can be greenhouses on that property. If a homeowner wants to have a greenhouse, they can have a greenhouse. So we're not trying to just put them right in front of the house. It's just where they fit on this property. Again, the amphitheater is more, there cannot be any kind of amplified music or speakers at all. It's more for if a class wants to come and learn about some kind of gardening, then we can have a class sit up there and watch a teacher talk about gardening. So again, no concerts. But we have, we're probably, I said, like I said, 10 parking spaces so we don't really expect a lot of traffic. The only commercial, if someone wants to buy some vegetables at the end of the day, if they've worked there, they can buy vegetables. We don't expect for this to be a store where people are going to be traveling a long distance to buy vegetables. The people that work here are from the community, you know, the Britton area. You work three or four hours, you get to take home three bags of groceries or whatever, there will be some kind of an equation there. But it's just, it's provide, it's provide vegetables for the community and for them to have a chance to learn about gardening. Again, the chickens, the animals are more there for grazing, for pest control. We're not trying to create a dairy of any kind. I think we had, we could have one cow, two sheep, two goats. And we lent it to chickens to 30 so it's not like it's going to be an egg farm. But there could be eggs produced there and someone that works there could take home some eggs with them at the end of the day, so.
Is the fencing or the screening that you talked about, will that impact your view of the city?
Oh, well, I'm not worried about that. I'm naive enough to think that I'll have that preserved for the rest of my lifetime, so. But looking at, you know, 150 feet to a bunch of plastic houses is not my idea of a wonderful view. The main issue, you know, he's already stated that there's a caretaker. There's people coming for, learn how to garden. There's people coming to work in the garden and put in time there. So currently, there are probably 10 cars, 10 vehicles that go up and down that road at least twice a day. And the condition of the road is such that it will not handle additional, it's been dry, additional traffic. This year's been very dry. We haven't, the city comes and grades it maybe two, three times a year. Fourth, we're really lucky. And we complain a lot. But, you know, it's an issue. Who's going to take care of the road?
Mr. Johnston, that was one of my questions that I had previously asked. Bob, what is the status as it relates to North Lindsey off of Britton, this area that he's referring to? Because I've driven up, I drove there down that road, I guess about three weeks ago. And I was concerned about if this is going to be a business that will enhance traffic to a large degree, then do we not require some type of infrastructure in reference to the ingress and egress of there?
That's really gauged on the anticipated impact of the use. If they were trying to rezone this to do a warehouse or something like that, which would generate the kind of traffic that would impact that road, then there could be improvements required. But in their review of this application, they didn't feel that the additional traffic that this adds really is going to impact that road significantly.
Mr. Kelly, you drove down the road. I've been driving it for 26 years. It'll impact it. It's a one-lane dirt road with some gravel. 26 years, the city has put gravel on that twice. And one time it was the millings from the road construction where they take up the rock and gravel and put it on there. That was terrible. It took 10 years for that dust to finally get blown away. But, you know, if you put anything on it and there's a low water crossing, I mean...
What is staff's recommendation on this?
We recommended approval subject to the conditions they agreed to.
What was the vote by the planning commission?
It was, it's like six to one.
Who was, was the one representative of Ward Seven?
No, Ward Seven voted for it.
Mayor, at the, at the meeting, everyone was talking about a community garden. And I had the envision of, go over by Chesapeake and see their community garden where their employees have little plots and all that. And this is what we originally thought was coming in there. That'd increase the number of traffic uses. But from what they have presented, it is a communal. They're going to have bus in folks to work in the yard.
Yeah, I think you make some good points, but I think our staff and the planning commission are not unsophisticated people easily hoodwinked. I mean, this has been examined and looked at and it's currently, you know, available for development now.
As R1 or above?
Right, so, anyway. Skip, do you have any direction on this you want us to go?
You know, Mr. Johnson, I would hope that the information that has been provided to staff and the information that has been provided to me, and as I stated, I've been out to the area and initially I was concerned and I didn't know exactly how many homes was in the area. But, you know, they presented this as a nonprofit community garden to, you know, give the community an opportunity to have, you know, some naturally grown vegetables, eggs. The one thing that I was concerned about was when they started talking about the various animals, the exact limitation that they agreed to. And I knew how far it stepped back from, at least when I went out there, you could kind of get an indication of how far it would be from the residents that are presently in the area. And with the venting from staff, I'm going to have to support this. But I would like to say, you know, because this could be something that could change almost overnight, that if all of a sudden you have 45, 50, or 60 chickens and this really turns into nothing but a total farm activity, I think that's going to be a real problem in reference to support in the future because I just want, you know, a clean project if this is what they came in and said they would do, they stick to it. But I could understand that, you know, chickens multiply. And so when you say you limited it to 30, somebody's going to have to be really watching the hen house. And, you know, cuss them.
Brian, can I ask some questions about the use? Can you describe this operation a little bit better for me?
Yes, and I may have Annie come out and do it also. Joshua's Foundation's been a nonprofit in this city for 26 years. They're going to be the ones operating it. With Annie back here as a, what's your horticulturist, has a degree in all this, really wants to give back to the community. The only commercial uses can only be associated with this community garden. So it's not something if they decide 12 months from now, 18 months from now, we don't want to do this anymore, it can't become a commercial venture to do something different.
What's the revenue and their business model, though?
I don't know that they've, have you even looked at that? Is there a, why don't you come up and talk about that, Annie, if you would, or Skip, either one of you? come up and talk about that, Annie, if you would, or Skip, either one of you?
Well, she's coming down. Mr. Kelly, the livestock, we don't, I don't care about. I mean, really. That doesn't concern me at all. I appreciate your looking out for us there, but the traffic is the main issue that we have there.
Okay, okay. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Annie Smith. I am an Oklahoma State graduate of the Public Horticulture Department and went to grad school at Case State to study human issues in horticulture. And I deeply believe in this project because we have the capacity to not only provide food for community that needs it and help support the people that are getting assistance in other ways, but we can truly teach people within this setting how to garden for themselves and create their own sustainable food in their own backyard. And that's what we hope to do with it. The business model looks like we start out with greenhouses so that we can produce all year round, teaching people how they can do this on a smaller scale as well. We want to have garden areas so that we can cooperatively run the garden. We're not going to run our gardens like a Chesapeake community garden where there are allotment gardens, but we'll be doing everything as a team. And one person cannot do this alone. And that's why we hope to strengthen the community through doing this as a team effort. The business model, the revenue looks, if everything were ideal, I'm sure you guys are used to looking at numbers and everything, we have the potential to, over 10 years, put a million dollars back into the community. So, I really feel like this is a great project, and I fully-
I guess, where does the revenue come from? I mean, are people paying for the privilege of being a part of this?
No, sir. The revenue comes from selling the produce at farmers' markets, taking it off of the campus to farmers' markets that run full year, also selling to a CSA subscription program. Our local area residents will be invited to partake of a weekly subscription of organic food that we grow on the farm. And we will deliver to them. There is a fee for that, and so income will come from that.
So, you won't be doing any retail there on the site?
Not on the site. There will be days, for instance, where select people will be invited to come out and pick blackberries for an hour. It's called a pick-your-own-operation. It could happen seasonally. It's not, it's going to be by invitation only. And it's because of labor. To pick blackberries all day would cost us more than it would cost for our family to come out and experience it for themselves.
So, an individual couldn't just pull off of Britton Road, drive back there, and purchase any of the produce or any of the vegetables that you're growing?
There will not be any signs from Britton Road. If they are a volunteer and they know that someone is there and that they have scheduled volunteer hours and are invited to come and volunteer, then they, yes, could come and get vegetables. But it's by invitation only.
What's your anticipation of when that road's going to need to be improved, or do you think it will need to be improved?
I have spoken with the Engineering Department, the Street Department. They did come out and book, John Doyle has been with the Street Department for 20 years, I believe, he said, and said that he gave it his personal checkmark. It doesn't look like it needs any improvement.
What's your expectation? Are you going to be coming back to us in five years and saying, you know, we really need to four-lane this road?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Thank you for the direct question.
Just trying to find out what your expectation's going to be down the line.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Skip, you want to make a motion?
One other caveat. Part of staff's report states that there would be a pond and that fish will be for sale. Is that right? Will it be open to the public to come fish there or open to the public to come purchase fish there?
It would also be by invitation only.
Only by invitation? So, this is an invitation garden, not a public garden?
We do hope to serve the public, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to give the blessings of it, and I want to, again, reiterate my concerns, as Mr. Johnson so clearly stated. And I really have an issue with this road myself. I can't understand how we can require some little small businesses to have so much infrastructure in order to get any type of permit, and yet, and still, we can approve when we know the conditions of the road aren't there, that's been there for such a long period of time with very little upkeep, that knowing that there's going to be some increase in reference to traffic on this road. You've got to have, you wouldn't be there unless you wanted some increase of traffic. You wouldn't be there unless you wanted people to come there. And so, without a doubt, there's going to be some issues in that area. But I hope everybody keeps their word in reference to the other conditions, and hopefully, this all works out.
Can I just, have you considered, I mean, would you be willing to do any improvements to the road? I mean, if you're going to generate a million dollars in revenue, is that-
Not necessarily revenue, put back into the community. So, reinvest it into the community for our nonprofit purposes. We are an organization that seeks to help the neighborhoods that we serve. There certainly could be some adjustments made to the budget. And as we're doing fundraising, if particular funders would like to help improve the road, we're not, we're not not asking to improve the road. And we do certainly hope to have effective and efficient road structures in place. And so, I do intend to continue to work with the Engineering Department of Oklahoma City and follow their recommendations as per the permits and things require. I am a person of my word, and I do intend to keep my word on the whole project.
Yes. I move that we pass the consent.
All right, we have a second. Okay, we're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward Three. The address is 850 North Meridian Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become a simplified planning and development. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up? Is the applicant present? Have come forward? This was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. If you just give the council just a brief overview of what you're trying to do?
Yes. My name is William Freos. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. Leonard Henson. And this project is going to be a five-plex on a piece of property that's 100 by 135 feet. We've worked with the staff, trying to see what the best use of this. And the spud on this would be similar to the one that's over on Harrison, that's the 86, Bud 86 on your map that you can look at. We intend to put the project as more of an L shape, one story. It will be utilized, like I said, for individual, similar to an apartment, but it'll be units that'll be rented. And we've had a concern with the location of, on top of the hill there on Meridian, if anybody's been out that direction on there, that we made sure that the traffic and the other portions would work in regards to the full traffic pattern, that you don't back up onto Meridian off the property. Like a lot of properties along Meridian, there are certain residential the other that they physically back into the maiden four-lane traffic. We didn't do that. Even on this small piece of property, we were capable of being able to do that. The other thing is, the full structure building will be under 5,000 square feet. And like I said earlier, it'd be one story.
Have you had any, Bob, is Bob Teener here? We received late yesterday a letter from a gentleman from out of city?
That's correct.
What was the gentleman's name?
It's Marlon Boswell.
Boswell. Have you had any contact with-
I have not. I know staff has. I've talked with staff about it. He had a concern with four items in regards to his letter. I got a copy of this from staff. He had an, he said that the traffic was a big problem, and that had been taken care of in regards to the fact that even the trash being picked up would not back onto the Meridian. So, I guess he wasn't aware of that. The other part was the multifamily density. He, I understand that he had talked to staff about this, that he thought it was a two-story, and it's only one story, to blend in with residential area. The other part was, he had a deal saying there were so many along 10th and Meridian apartments that there was no need for an additional portion for that. The other portion was the add to the retail and office portions of that. And being on Meridian right there at that particular location, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be ideal for a commercial with such a small piece of property.
Do I understand that each of these units will be less than 1,000 feet?
Yes, ma'am, they will be. And they'll be, they'll have a one-bedroom, and they'll have a study. And they'll have the adequate parking that meets all the staff requirements for the parking. Very small. It's a, you're putting it on a postage stamp, basically. But it's, I feel it's a good use of a piece of property that's needed. And my client actually owns the apartment next door to it, which it'll be managed in regards that way, too. So, it's right there. So, there's no need for an office.
As by other information, the apartment complex next to this gentleman owns, we have received no complaints from any of the neighbors about the operation of that. And it's been in there for how long? A long, long time. So, this is a little bit different scenario than what we're dealing with along 10th Street, where we do have a challenge with multifamily housing. So, unless the council has any questions, I'd like to move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions on 8A3? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Item 8A4 is in Ward Two. The address is 1933 Northwest 23rd Street. It's currently a planned unit development. Also involves an urban design and 23rd Street Uptown Corridor overlay district, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. I'm guessing this is at OCU? This isn't, yes, an application by OCU. It's to permit construction of an accessory building for an existing commercial building. No unfavorable considerations identified. It passed the Planning Commission unanimously.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. There is one issue, as the council said, this did pass Planning Commission unanimously. The Planning Commission recommended approval with no setback. Originally, there was a TE, and the Planning Commission recommended the TE go away. And Mr. Teener's here to confirm that, so we would ask that the TE not be here.
It was deleted at Planning Commission, and the document that the clerk has, has the amended, has a corrected document. So, it was just shown on the memo buyer in error.
Any protests? Anybody else? Does what you typically said just typically changes the Planning Commission's mind on items? Wouldn't make any material difference, would it?
Well, and the Planning Commission discussed that technical evaluation. What our memo should have said is that they deleted it.
Just an error on-
I see.
It's just an error on our memo.
Yeah, I misunderstood originally. I thought he was asking for something that the Planning Commission had wanted to taken out and he wanted to put back in.
Oh, I apologize. No.
That's all right. Probably my concern. Ed? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B1, and two actually, are closing portions of an alley. The first is in Ward Seven. Skip, you okay with this?
I am. I haven't received any objections to it. So, move it.
Okay. Do we have a second? We're voting on item 8B1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B2 is in Ward Six. Meg?
8B2 is the closing of a portion of an alley at 1400 Northwest 3rd Street. And the applicant owns all of the property, abutting the proposed closing. There were no protests, and it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, so I'd recommend approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8B2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
May I go back and just to ask a quick question on 8B1, which was the closing of West Park Place? I think emergency might have been needed on that. Is that correct? I'd like to ask for the emergency on that.
All right. How about a second on the emergency on 8B1? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C, that item has been deferred until October 25th. Item 8D, recommended for denial at the Planning Commission level. It's in Ward Eight. The address is 15504 Jefferson's Garden Court. It's currently a simplified planning and development. It will become a new one. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, does anybody sign up to talk about this one? This is one that was considerable discussion over, and the Planning Commission turned it down. The Planning Commission staff recommended approval. There were no unfavorable considerations identified in their report. We have, the owner's representative is here. If you have questions. This is a relatively short cell, phone tower, 75 feet. It will be disguised as a flagpole and fly the flag. It will be lit at night, so it'll be a patriotic addition to that part of town. This is a very active neighborhood it's in, and I suspect had there been objections, we would have heard from them. And it will be located at the back of a lot that is, now have a gymnasium or a health club on it. It, I hate to do this, but I'm going to vote, make a motion to overturn what the Planning Commission recommended and approve this application.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, item 8D, a yes vote is to approve the construction of the tower. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'd like to ask for the emergency on this one as well. I move the emergency.
All right, cast your votes on the emergency. Passed unanimously. Item 8E has been deferred until November 8th. Couple of people have showed up. That's unfortunate. Okay. Jana Garlets, Christine Garlets, you want to come forward? You were hoping to speak on, hold on a second. You can come on forward while I figure out exactly. You were coming up on item 8E. The applicant deferred a, requested a deferred. It was granted. We're not going to hear that item until November 8th.
Okay.
I'm not going to force you to come back on November 8th. If you'd like to speak to council today, so you don't feel like you have to come back, you can do that.
We'll come back. I just wanted to make sure that we were going to have our opportunity.
All right. November 8th, then, is the new date. You're welcome. Item 8F has been deferred until November 8th. Item 8G, every few years, we go through the codification process, and this is the final hearing today.
Yes, and I will need the emergency after.
Okay, so we're going to vote, and then vote on the emergency, apparently. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Cast your votes on the emergency, and it passed unanimously as well. Item 8H has been struck. Item I has an ordinance for final hearing. This has to do with food and beverage issues. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes on item 8I. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing. This has to do with the impoundment of cars. Anyone here wishing to speak under this item? Item 8J is a public hearing. All right, how about a motion, then, just to push it on along to the next time? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. And item 8K is being introduced today. This would bring us in line with state code, and it's a police issue. Chief, do you want to speak on this issue?
Yeah, K is, K is actually an ordinance that's being amended for the purpose of adding the violation of prostitution to the nuisance abatement ordinance, which currently includes vehicles that are used in drive-by shootings and also in pursuits, which is K. Is that correct? Correct. J was, you voted on J. I thought it was the junk.
This is K.
This is K, right. It's the nuisance abatement. So, the nuisance abatement deals with the prostitution, and the amendment of that ordinance that allows to include the impoundment of those vehicles for 90 days if they're used to facilitate the act of prostitution.
All right. Just being introduced today. We need a vote, we need a motion- We need a motion, though. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Item 8L is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8L?
Yes.
All right. Sounds like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We do have one item that's a dilapidated structure in a HP district, so we will need a separate motion on that. It's in Ward 2. Ed, do you have any problem with this? Okay. No one has signed up. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. Ed makes a motion, second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8N? All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8O is a resolution that will officially terminate the Myriad Gardens Authority.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this issue? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8P is a resolution to name some park property, 45th and South Walker. Pete, do you want to speak on this in Ward 4?
Mike Dover's been very instrumental in putting together the park there at 46th and Walker, and very instrumental in moving variety, now variety care to another level in Oklahoma City. And it's a well-deserved honor for him. It's really a nice park. It's something that all of us can be proud of. It's a, I've talked about it before, but it's a very cooperative venture between the city and the private sector and a nonprofit. It's going to be maintenance-free for the city. The variety care's going to maintain it, so it's really a nice thing. And I'm pleased to move approval of it.
Second.
All right. We're voting on item 8P. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Item 8Q is a companion item, really, to the MFA issue we dealt with with the police headquarters. I don't know that I'm clear on what motion we might need on 8Q1 and 2.
We won't do the initial study presentation, but we'll need to approve the joint resolution, Q2, with the addition of the scenario C being adopted.
Okay. Cast your votes on item 8Q2. Passed unanimously. Item 8R, S, T, U, and V, really all deal with collective bargaining agreements. And I understand we're ready to go on item 8R.
Move it.
Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8S, I understand we are ready to go.
We are, Mayor. There is an error in the memo, we'd like to point out. The item is correct, but it does call for a 3.5 pay plan adjustment effective July 1 of 2007, and that really should be 2011 instead of 2007. I'm sure Mr. Kayes would like the other option, but that wasn't really what was agreed to. So, and I do, as we go forward to approve this, I do want to thank Mr. Kayes for his efforts this year. He's been a pleasure to work with as we've gone forward with the negotiations.
I would concur with that. Appreciate it. Yes, absolutely.
I'll move it ahead.
Okay. Yes, Sky? Good. We will need your name and address for the record.
Sky Kayes, President of the Internal Order Police, 1624 South Ag, New Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I wanted to thank everybody for their efforts and their work with my bargaining team this year to get this contract resolved in such a timely manner. The membership passed it almost overwhelmingly, and we hope to have a good relationship next year when we go into contract negotiations again. It would be lovely if we could do multiple-year contracts, but in this state, we cannot. So again, on behalf of the Internal Order Police and our contract team, we appreciate your efforts, and we look forward to working with you again next year and resolving contracts in a timely manner. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming down. All right. We're voting on item 8S. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8T, taking care of our employee contracts.
This is for the management, administration, and technical support positions.
Okay. Cast your votes on 8T. Passed unanimously. And item 8U, similar, but it's for ASME.
No, it's not for ASME. This is for ASME-level employees, not covered by the ASME contract, because they're either in personnel or finance-related activities. And so they're not covered by the contract, so it's a very, very small employee group.
All right. Cast your votes on 8U. Passed unanimously. Item 8V, we do not need executive session on this item.
That's correct.
Okay. How about a motion then on 8V?
Just strike it.
Okay. Just strike 8V then. Move on to item.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to strike? Okay. Cast your votes. Item 8V is struck. On to item 8W, X, and Y. These are all dealing with the same case. I don't think we need executive session. We're just really approving attorney representation on these items.
Correct. We do not.
All right. We'll have to vote on them individually, though, so how about a motion on item 8W?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8X, a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8Y, a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8Z. This is a different case, but it's the same concept. We're just applying an attorney to an existing court case. Right. Motion on 8Z?
Yeah.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we're on to 8AA. This is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8AA? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 9A? All right. Did we get a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Councilman Ryan, you have a concept for us today?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I think it's a valid concept, but we've delayed it long enough that I think we need to, I'd like to defer this for a couple of weeks to put new dates in it that reflect some of the deferrals that we made this morning, and that we will make sure that we have council meetings on those dates that those people told we were going to have council meetings on. So I'd like to have it deferred.
Would it be okay if we strike this one and bring back a new one?
Yes, that's exactly what I would like to have. Just throw this one away, and we'll start fresh. And I think, I envision a three-month or a full quarter to test it. Maybe we could get by with just two months to test it and make sure that we don't upset anything.
All right.
Maybe that's what that new resolution could be.
So basically, November, December, probably?
November, December.
All right. You want to make a motion to strike?
Motion to strike.
Second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Items from council. Gary, you want to get us started today?
None.
Okay. Ed? All right. Larry?
I'd just like to thank Kenny, your two staff members, for doing an excellent job last night at a very challenging meeting with the Rio Bella neighborhood out in southwest Oklahoma City. There's been some difficulty with a developer going bankrupt, and they did an excellent job in presenting what the city's legal position was, answered all the questions. Keith Wickersen was also there from Public Works. The citizens were very satisfied with the progress that's being made, and it was just a good example of what can happen when everybody does their job. So thank you to your staff, Kenny.
Thank you.
Okay. Pete? David?
Just one item, and I was going to see if Marcia Slaughter could come forward. Now that we're finally getting into some cooler weather, during the past several weeks, as I would attend the various homeowners' neighborhood association meetings, a common was just how thankful the citizens were out in Ward 5. We had a large number of water line breaks take place during the summer. Marcia, thank you for joining us. I was just wanting to tell everyone, I probably received the most number of compliments on you and your staff during the summer, as we had so many water line breaks. While nobody likes to experience that, they did appreciate the quickness that the city exhibited in coming out to try to repair those. And often, they would see both men and women coming out to repair a line, and this would be the third or fourth or sometimes fifth line that they had to repair that same day. And so I know they worked many, many hours, and I just wanted to pass along those compliments and appreciation to you and your staff for a very difficult summer.
Thanks. I'll be happy to tell the people who did the work.
Great. Thank you. That's all, Your Honor.
Okay. Meg?
Yes, Your Honor. Just very briefly, I just wanted to congratulate really all of the organizers of many events that took place over the weekend in Oklahoma City. There were so many things to do. Night rowing down on the river on Friday night as part of the regatta was spectacular, and with the new finish line tower built, there isn't any prettier venue, I would say, to observe than from that fourth-floor tower. It was great. And I hope many people did attend the outdoor food festival at H and 8 Friday night. There were probably 400 or more folks there, enjoying food from different food vendors, and great atmosphere. And this really was a great example. There wasn't one issue that came up. Our inspectors went down early. They reviewed all the trucks. Everything was done according to code. Everybody had the right permits, and it was a really great example of how working together and communicating well, people can bring a new event to the city that was very well-attended. So I just wanted to really thank everybody, Chief City and Chief Brian and everyone for helping. And then the Plaza Festival was also this weekend. Crowds down there as well, music and food and art and great success. And so Kristen Bells and her staff deserve a lot of credit for another wonderful event. Soapbox Derby, Pete, was on Sunday. Who was winner? Do you remember who the winner was?
The rebuilding together derby.
Yeah?
It was great. It was, it was good. Very good. Well-attended, probably best attendance I've seen. It was good.
We had teams from all kinds.
Actually, Taste of Bricktown, I went by Taste of Bricktown afterwards, and that was amazing. That was amazing.
I couldn't manage a Taste of Bricktown after that cheeseburger I had. It was great.
I forced myself, and I was glad I did. Actually, I had a piece of shrimp wrapped in bacon in honor of Dr. Shadie. Grandpa was like, oh!
All right. Skip?
I just have one comment. I think we're beginning to see these applications for cell towers, kind of on a regular basis. And I'm wondering if the federal government has the main authority as it relates to the jurisdiction over cell towers, or have we already investigated the issue as to the city's responsibility or either our zoning issues and the federal government under the Federal Communications Act as it relates to cell towers?
Yes. If the cell tower is necessary for the telecommunications company to provide cell service to their customers, then we cannot deny it. We have some authority over aesthetic regulations over it, and we can make some requirements related to that. But unless, if they come in and say, "We need this cell tower at this location to be able to provide adequate service to our customers," unless we can prove that, "No, you don't need this," or there's another location where you could put this at that's available, then we really can't deny that location. We can, that we can put conditions on it that they have to, say, screen it or provide landscaping and all those sorts of things.
Honey, I don't know how it would work here exactly, but I understand in other communities, and, you know, obviously, we're not New York City, but in places like that, they're beginning to place them internally in buildings rather than make them external. There might be some solutions like that that would be creative.
Right.
The question I would have on cell towers is that, I think one of the problems is that they don't want to share. They all want their own. But I don't know that there's any technological reason that they couldn't share a tower.
The Board of Adjustment had the same discussion many years ago, and yes, they can share, but you actually can't force them to share. Whoever actually owns the tower has to give a lease or permission for the other company to come in and put their antenna on there. So you actually can't force them to do it, but technologically, they can share.
They've asked us to share, and we've done it, but we can't, but they're not willing to do it themselves.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of minor things, but this is not minor. In addition to all that was going on this weekend, the Canterbury Coal Society put on an extraordinary program Saturday night, and they had a side-by-side where they invited the Norman High School Choir to participate with them. Both groups did an exceptional job, and it was well-received by the audience. The second issue I'd like to ask the city manager to help on is the new Northwest Library will open soon, hopefully late this year. And I would like, if we could do a traffic study in that vicinity, to see if there are any modifications to the traffic plans to facilitate the use of the library. And I would like to include the possibility of some potential crossings on some of the streets that we have out there. And I would like to also include the possibility of extending the sidewalk system to allow some of the neighborhoods out there to walk to the library. I think it would be consistent with what we've done before on public buildings like that. Anyway, I'd like to do it in advance of the opening, if we can, at least to have the study completed, and then implement any recommendations in the upcoming year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Just going over the hotel-motel tax collections. Looks like really good numbers for, this is the first three months of the fiscal year. Am I reading this correctly?
Well, yes. It's, it's a monthly report, but it's.
And there's the quarterly performance.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Looks like good news all around. City manager reports. Anything else?
No. We have to answer any questions.
Okay. Citizens to be heard. Has anyone signed up?
I have a question about the hotel-motel tax. Just a quick inquiry. Could the tax be used to increase the size of the convention center?
No, it's dedicated to the fairgrounds, not necessarily to horse shows, but it's dedicated to fairgrounds, as I recall.
No, a portion of it's dedicated to the CVT, the bigger portion.
I thought you were talking about the part dedicated to the horse show business.
It's, I forget, I forget the specific breakdown on that. Craig Freeman probably knows, but there's a portion of it that just can go for general convention and tourism purposes.
Right. Right. It's still with the amount that they had previously, and so it was split up in, I think it's four-elevens goes toward, of the tax goes towards the promotion of convention and tourism, and then one-eleventh is specifically for promotion of events, and then the remainder is for the fairgrounds.
Could it be utilized? We've gotten that conversation about that $30 million, as if that $30 million was necessary to build the convention center. Could that be used? Some of that money, it looks like we're making more, it's over budget. Could that over-budget portion be utilized and added to the convention budget to?
I think that would have to be a question for Kenny on, I think probably a portion, not, the portion that's dedicated for promotions and it's dedicated for the hotel tax improvement, improvements at the fairgrounds could not be, I believe.
That's correct. And the four-elevens probably could be. It could be, the four-elevens. And let, we don't have bonds that, the four-elevens isn't paying off any bonds. It's just.
It's actually committed against the fairground bonds.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Well, that just might be something they might consider if that need is there to, for that extra $30 million, they might consider using some of that if they could up.
Right. Now Craig says it's committed to backing up the fairground.
It has to be used to back the bonds. That's right. We haven't used it to pay any of the bonds, but it's got to be available to back the bonds.
It's a credit support for the bond.
Yes, that's correct.
That's a good one.
That's correct.
And it is just credit.
That's right.
The four-elevens, as people refer to it, is what they've had all along for operation of this, of this Convention and Visitors Bureau. And if you took any of that away, then you'd reduce the activities of the Bureau overall itself. The one-eleventh, which was the increased money they got with the, when we increased the hotel motel tax, is specified by ordinance to be used for sponsorships for events only. And then the fair receives its portion for activities or building needs at the fair. My comment just was based on the, the, how well the tax appears to be doing as an additional revenue stream. There might be, if that need is there, that they might want to look at that.
And this was actually.
I'm talking about the revenue over and above all the budgeted items appears to be doing very well. And that might be a place they could look.
Somewhat tangential, but will the city be doing a convention center hotel study?
At some point, we anticipate going out, bringing you a, a request for proposals to get a consultant. So yes.
In what timeframe?
I don't, I don't know that at this point.
In the next year?
I would guess so, yes.
And the, the focus of that study would be?
Uh, the, the, develop the, the, determine the need for it.
Okay.
And also to, to help with the, the potential financing options.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We had enough?
Assistant?
Uh, there weren't any. Yeah. All right. Word adjourned.